Okay, let's begin. Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on April 23rd, 2025 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board of the Princeton Municipal Bill Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on April 17th, 2025, and has been posted to the municipal website. Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by Executive Order 292, in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meeting Protocol for Public Bodies to conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public, notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website in order to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy.
Hey, sorry. I was gonna pick it up.
Oh, sorry. And by transmitting a copy of the same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Claudia, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Chen? Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber? Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna? Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Chairman Cohen?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. We have three resolutions this evening. We'll do those first. The first is case Z24-579, 17 Madison Avenue, Block 28.03, Lot 53, in the R4B Zone. The resolutions were sent to you the other day and they are on the website. Does anybody have any questions on the resolution, anything we should talk about? Or in the absence of that, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll move approval of the resolution.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. Claudia?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Our second resolution of the evening is case Z22-295, Block 49.01, Lot 2.01, in the E2B Zone. Once again, this is, oh, this is 13 Prospect Avenue. The resolutions were emailed out and are on the website.
Board members, you also got a revised draft, but you may not have had an opportunity to look at it since it was emailed to you. So I could highlight for you the changes that we're proposing to make to the resolution that was in your package.
Would you please?
Yes. On page three of the resolution, the bottom, just going to clarify that the applicant, not only are they not seeking approval for any new parking spaces, they also no longer intend to make changes to the driveway, the trash area, the retaining wall or related elevations. And then on page seven, at the bottom, again, it's the same clarification. We'd had some further discussions with staff and so we want to make clear that, again, those improvements now are not being sought by the applicant right now. They're also not creating any new parking spaces. And then, bottom of page J, paragraph 10, since they were only seeking approval for the primarily the elevator tower, the only conditions in the review memo that Derek and Dan Weisman did are limited conditions which have to do with making sure they get third-party approvals, complying with historic preservation, and providing any necessary estimates or inspection fees and any required bonding. And then the same thing under the now. Therefore, again, we're just making these clarifications because I don't think it was particularly clear before. So those are the changes that we're suggesting to the resolution.
Thank you. Okay, I assume the applicant's seen this?
They have.
Okay, good.
They have.
Board members, any questions, comment, or would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move approval of the resolution.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Claudia?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our third resolution of the evening is case Z24-595-55, Block 79 Prospect Avenue, Block 50.01, Lot 4, in the E2B Zone. Once again, oh, excuse me. Once again, the resolutions were emailed and are on the website. If there are any questions, please bring them up. If not, if someone would like to make a motion.
I'll move to approve this.
Thank you.
I will second Stein.
Thank you. Claudia?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our fourth and final resolution is 650 Great Road, application Z24-481, Block 8501, Lots 1.01, 2.01, 11, 12, in the E4, E4, I can't read my own writing, E4T Zone. Okay, the resolutions were in your packet. Questions, comments, or motions?
Okay, I'll move to approve it.
Thank you. Second?
I will second Stein.
Thank you. Claudia?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we have three applications this evening. The first one is case Z24-484, Block 47.02, Lot 36, in the R4 Zone. This is for a time extension. Derek, can you frame this for us?
Derek, I'll swear you in for the evening. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. The applicants' trustees of Princeton University are the owners of 58-60 William Street. They received approval from the Zoning Board of Adjustment at its regular meeting held on June 26, 2024 to permit additions and alterations to the property at 58-60 William Street. Variances granted for D4 floor area ratio and numerous C bulk variances for lot area, lot width, depth, front porch side yard setback, smaller side yard setback, combined side yard setback, rear yard setbacks, height to setback ratios, AC condenser setbacks, impervious coverage, parking spaces, stall width, and parking setbacks. The decision was memorialized on August 28, 2024 by Resolution Number Z24-484 and was published in the Princeton Packet on September 6, 2024. The applicant is requesting a one-year extension to September 6, 2026. Section B17A213 permits the Board to grant one 12-month extension of variances for good cause shown. The applicant should address the reason for the extension. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address it.
Chairman, I'm just gonna, I should have indicated earlier that the applicant was required to notice. They did so, and the noticing is in order.
All right, I forgot to ask. Okay. Are we going to hear from the applicant? Or are we? Yes.
I'm Mr. Chair, Christopher Dugresia. How are you?
I'm good, and you?
Good, good. It's been a while. For the record, my name is Christopher Dugresia from the law firm of Figury, Drinker, Biddle, and Reath here on behalf of the applicant trustees of Princeton University. Mr. Bridger has already sort of outlined the timing of this. Under normal circumstances where you would have a renovation project with this much complexity and detail, dealing with an older house and having to hire the right people to do the work on it, you would typically have a site plan, which would vest you for two years and give you three one-year extensions. But because this is a duplex, it actually is exempt from site plans. So when we came in, we basically just had a variance application. So unfortunately, the municipality of Princeton has an ordinance that's unique and cuts off rights if you don't have a construction permit within a year. So and for a project of this magnitude and with this type of detail required for the actual construction, we have to go through steps like the normal course, compliance. In this particular case, we have to work through some meetings with the neighbors. That was the homeowners association of Firestone Court. We're still working on putting together the construction team that has the expertise in dealing with these types of renovations. And the way your ordinance written, it just automatically cuts off rights. And we've put way too much time into this application. There's about four and a half months left. So we feel that it would be very reasonable to extend it to September 6, 2026 to allow us to kind of go through all of the steps we need to bring this so we can move forward on this application.
Right. Board members, any question of Mr. Dugresia? Okay. Claudia, well, Mr. Dugresia, we're gonna open this up to the public before I do. So do you want to add anything else?
No, I mean, I have somebody here from Princeton University, but it really doesn't really, you know, if there was any type of questions, I have the Director of Real Estate, but we don't really have anything to testify to. We just think that we need more time to get this lined up.
All right. Okay. I'm going to open up the public portion of the meeting. If there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak on behalf of this application, please indicate that by pressing the raise hands button at the bottom of the screen. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak?
There are no hands.
Okay. All right, I'll close the public portion of the hearing. Again, Mr. Dugresia, before we go into executive session, do you want to add anything?
Not at this time.
Okay.
May I ask just for clarification? It sounds like you're saying that it will take maybe four more months to get sort of the paperwork in order or the approvals in order, and then like a year to do the to do the construction or?
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, under your ordinance, everything automatically gets cut off if you don't have a construction permit in hand after a year of the publication of approval for that initial resolution. So come September, which is only about four and a half months from now, if we don't have everything lined up, our approvals get voided and we have to start from square one, which, you know, it took us a year or so even before we got to the planning board because we had to study this very old, older duplex and put together a plan, look at the structure, you know, figure out the best way to renovate it. So at this point, we need the extra time to go through compliance review, which is to make sure that the plans have addressed all of the comments in the staff reports, to meet with the neighbor and homeowners association, to work through issues with them. They had a couple of concerns and we said we would sit down with them. That's going to take a little time. And then, of course, to put the construction team together, they're the experts there, and to process the permit. So you don't get a permit day one. You have to submit it. There's questions. And on this particular kind of project where there's a lot of, you know, very, a lot of, you know, a lot of details, it's going to take us a while before we'll actually have a permit in hand.
Thanks.
Eve, once they get a building permit, they've started effectively. They have six months to start work and ask for an inspection, just the validation of the permit. So they just have to get the permit issued by September 6. So. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, Board, any questions? If not, someone would like to make a motion?
I move we approve the extension.
We have a second?
Second. Floyd?
Okay. Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
You're welcome. I have a good evening. Okay, our next case is 141 Dodds Lane, case Z25-811, Block 46.03, Lot 22, in the R4T Zone. Karen, are all the notices in order?
Yes, the notices are in order. The Board has jurisdiction tonight.
Okay. Derek, can you summarize your memo for us?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Miriam Anidish Baragihis, excuse me on the pronunciation of the name, are the owners of 141 Dodds Lane, are seeking a C1 and C2 variance to permit approval of conversion of a two-bay front-entry garage to a side-entry garage, which was constructed without zoning approval. Properties located in the R5T Zone in the former Princeton Township. The lot and the existing single-family house are complying with respect to the applicable bulk requirements. The applicant was granted zoning approval to permit alterations and additions to the existing home in January of 2024. It was determined at the time of the final inspection that the two-bay front-entry garage doors had been converted to a side-entry two-bay garage. The front-entry doors were an existing non-complying feature as front-facing garages require 16-foot setback from the nearest facade. The constructed side-entry garage doors, while less obtrusive than the two-front-facing garage doors, require an eight-foot setback from the nearest facade in accordance with Section 10B2552E1A. Variance relief is requested. The required setback is eight feet. The proposed setback is zero feet. And I note that in conjunction with the revision of the garage doors, the driveway was reconfigured to accommodate that new design. And there are a few non-compliances with that regarding the driveway width at the curb, which is 14 feet. The existing is 17 feet. And the maximum driveway width at the property line is restricted to 10, whereas the existing is 13 and a half feet. The applicant has indicated that these violations will be corrected and that no variances will be requested. They've requested consideration both under the C1 and the C2 criteria. That's my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions to Mr. Bridger? Okay. Who is going to present this case?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Ryan Kennedy from Stevens and Lee for the applicants. Thank you, everyone, for hearing us tonight. As Mr. Bridger said, we're talking about the renovations to the home now completed at 141 Dodds Lane. In a few minutes, I'll introduce the homeowners, Anidish and Miriam, who actually have quite a connection to that street and are really delighted to remodel and call this street their home once again in Princeton. Unfortunate story here, in purchasing the home and remodeling it, as Mr. Bridger said, there was an existing front-facing, non-conforming garage on this site. Their plans were to keep that same footprint and not change the garage. That was what was approved by zoning. But once they started building it, they got together with their builder and looked at the driveway configuration. You'll see why they looked at it. It was a kind of a straight shot to an intersection across the street and thought about making it what they thought to be more conforming by turning the non-conforming front-facing garage to a more conforming and more preferred Princeton-style sideways, but not fully conforming, side-facing garage. Unfortunately, even though they weren't, I think they were thinking that they weren't increasing the non-conformity, a variance really was required. So when the final inspections occurred, everyone realized that a variance was needed to turn the garage doors sideways. And so we are here in retrospect to ask for relief. While we did say either C1 or C2, it really is, well, potentially a hardship to move it back. It really is more of a C2 variance. If you all recall the 2016, 2017, 2018 discussions about neighborhood character front and center for new construction was the idea of these front-facing garages. And a lot of time was put towards limiting and curtailing the kind of tear downs that occur or were occurring rather than renovations. Here we have a renovation to the home, the existing footprint and a non-conforming front-facing garage that was actually, by turning it, made more conforming. We're not disagreeing with Mr. Bridger's interpretation that a variance is needed. But when looking at the purposes of zoning, in this case, the desire of Princeton to have garages that are not as car-centric, not as visible from the street. So by turning it sideways, we believe and hope you agree that it becomes more conforming and as a C2 perspective, a better design for the home. And again, as Mr. Bridger said, in moving the driveway to the side, you'll see again when we go through our slides why they did that and the benefit perhaps of not having it lined up and create a four-way intersection at the prior location. But there were, again, some field conditions. At two points, it was wider than it should be. Again, we represented and will that that's being corrected. We're not seeking variances for the, I'll say slightly, but the driveway that was put down wider than it should have been. We've got, I guess, two sets of witnesses. I've got both of the homeowners here tonight. And then Jeff Fleischer, our architect, if there's any questions really about, not to say what was done, but the design of the home. And if it's all right, I'd like to have all three of them. Two happen to be on one camera tonight, sworn in as our witnesses this evening.
That's fine. We just need the homeowners to unmute themselves? Great. If you would all raise your right hand, you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Miriam, if you want to just briefly introduce yourselves and kind of explain your connection both to the street and Princeton and apologies. I'm glad that you're both here. I know there was some questionable bedtime timing with tonight, but glad that we could have both of you as witnesses here tonight.
Yeah. Hi, guys. My name is Anidish and it's my wife, Miriam. Thank you, guys, all for your time. I'll let Miriam speak first.
Yep, so thanks for having us on today. So I moved to Princeton in 2003 to Dodds Lane, the same street that our new home is on. And my parents still live down the street, which is great. I attended Princeton Middle School and graduated from Princeton High School. So we really have a really strong connection to this town. I always dreamed of moving back to Princeton. And I feel so fortunate that we're able to raise our two kids here. Our current neighbors, actually, I used to babysit for when I was in high school. So we know their parents well and we know their kids well. But it was really important for both Anidish and I to remodel the home and not have a new build. You know, Princeton and especially Dodds Lane, in our opinion, is such a charming street. And we really wanted to keep the charm as much as possible.
And, you know, for myself, you know, I grew up in central Jersey most of my life. I went to Rutgers University. And, you know, since marrying Miriam, I got more familiar with Princeton as a town. And, you know, having spent a lot of time on Dodds Lane, I always thought in the back of my head that, you know, it would be great, A, to live in Princeton, but also like if there was ever a home on Dodds Lane, you know, especially with our two kids now. That's three years old and six months old. It would have been great. And then, you know, when we found this opportunity, you know, we were really lucky. And, you know, we thought, let's renovate this home and keep the existing footprint and see what we could do. And then, you know, for Miriam and I, one thing that we noticed after the renovations began was how kind of car-centric this driveway was. So our driveway intersects, it's on Dodds Lane, but it intersects Bertrand. So from Bertrand, it's a straight shot into our driveway. And, you know, we just felt that after thinking about it a while, it was really dangerous for a young family like ours. Because, you know, our kids, like our three-year-old likes to play in the driveway. And, you know, as our kids get older, we're going to spend a lot of time on the property. And we had noticed like, you know, a bunch of cars taking K-turns into our street, halfway into the old driveway, I should say. And, you know, we just got really nervous and wanted to, you know, get it away from the main part of the street. So, you know, we didn't think much of it because we thought that we're not changing the footprint so that we wanted to kind of, you know, kind of keep it to the same, you know, footprint over there and didn't think much of it. So, you know, our goal really was to just kind of make it more safe for our family and mainly for our kids. And, you know, we're here now to speak on the behalf. And I've spoken to my neighbor, Ray, who borders the driveway. And I believe he said he's going to join on later in the public portion, but he's in support of this. I also spoke to Peter Tovar, who's at the home right across the street at 140 Dodds Lane, as well as Leslie Livingston on 154 Dodds Lane and the neighbor next door, Darabelles, at 164 Dodds Lane. And they're all in support of this change. But more importantly, we're hoping that we can get your support because it was an honest mistake that we didn't realize that by, you know, even though we're keeping the same footprint, the garage door goes to the side. And it's a one-bay garage on the side. It's not two different bays. So it's just one bay on the side that we're hopefully looking for your support here.
All right. Thank you so much. If it's all right, we have one exhibit this evening. I believe it's 11 slides. I'd like to have that marked and we can have that applicant start taking it through us if it's all right for me to share my screen.
Okay.
If I did that correctly and you can see that, Anidish, we'll start as we usually do here to try to orient the Board to Dodds Lane. So this is Slide 2, is a clip of Princeton's zoning map in blue there. Is that where your house is at 141?
Yes.
Yeah, there's the arrow pointing right to it.
Yes.
So next slide three is an aerial photo and this is the home prior to your renovations or possibly even during it. There looks like there might be a construction trailer in the front, but just quickly note, particularly, I guess, you're talking about Bertland Drive and as previously configured, your driveway was essentially an extension of that street?
Yeah, it was a straight shot from a straight line from Bertrand onto the old driveway.
And here, slide four, we've got the prior conditions. This is, this will be Dodds Lane on the top left to right. On the left was the original home, on the right is the revised home, though without really much of a change to the footprint. The original configuration was the driveway right straight from the street, right kind of from Bertland into your front-facing garage. Then you essentially realize that you, you know, during construction that it might be, make sense to reroute the driveway and just turn the doors to the side. Is that right here?
Correct.
On the right side?
Correct.
So no, no change to the garage location or foundation or anything like that?
Correct.
So here, this is a photo or street view of the house pre-renovation. So here, I guess where this is standing perhaps in about a half a block away in in Bertland, kind of looking towards the home?
Yeah, Bertrand, yeah.
Oh, pardon. Sorry about that. Thank you. I, I don't have the benefit of you guys have kind of grown me up on the streets. So apologies for getting the name wrong. But here we're looking straight up at the front-facing garage that was there?
Correct.
And then here's the view of the remodeled home. You can kind of see, but the garage was now in the same location, but turned to the right.
Correct.
And maybe this is a good time to recap again, your, your thinking and reasoning for relocating the driveway as well?
Yeah, I mean, you know, for us, it really came down to our children because they love to play outside and we just wanted to create a safe environment for them and you know, just the thought of having seen cars making turns on the driveway, you know, just the thought of maybe accidentally a car going further away and, you know, little children outside just didn't want to take a chance. So we just thought it would be a lot more safer for us to put it away from the intersection of the street.
Previous location there on the left, closed-up curb cut and the new driveway location. And again, just for the board's benefit, it may be that some of these dimensions, they may have already been corrected in this photo, but will be corrected to conforming widths for at the, at the curb line as well as at the lot line for the
Yeah. And asphalt hasn't been laid down yet, so we can, whatever corrections need to be made there can, if that's okay with you guys, can be made, yeah.
Yep.
Let me just go back to the previous slide just for a second.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to see, yeah, it's fine. Thank you.
I'm glad you did that because I was a little confused by the, where the tree was in the after picture. It looked like
Yeah. The walkway gives it away, right?
So certainly not going anywhere, but I'm going to introduce our architect next for a couple of slides. But if there's any questions for the applicants, I'm happy to pause now before we switch over.
Board members, any questions? Please proceed, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. Jeff, if you could, I know you've testified before this board many times, but briefly give the board the benefit of your credentials as an architect.
Hi, Jeff Fleischer here. I have a Bachelor's of Architecture from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I've had my own firm in Flemington, New Jersey for the past thirty years.
Mr. Fleischer really will accept you as an expert in your
I think one more applicant, application from him, he gets a free coffee from the board on his, on his punch card perhaps. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Jeff, slide seven here. These are the elevations. I guess the first one on the left is what zoning had approved. Is that correct? And then the right represents the kind of the field change design, you know, drawn up after the fact?
That's correct, yes. The, the house on the right has the garage facing the street where it previously was. And then the house on the left has windows in place of the garage door and the garage door would be on the side.
From the perspective of the actual garage as a room or building, were there any changes to it? Foundation or otherwise, other than moving the doors, you know, from the front to the, to the side?
No, there were no other changes to the garage.
I'm guessing it's, it's not the biggest garage here because of, you know, it is, it is square or closer to square than, than, than some. There wasn't a lot of left to right change versus a front to back?
That's correct, yes.
Slide eight, we've got some photos of that side facing part of the garage, I guess, kind of mid, mid-construction before the landscaping is finished up here. Is that right?
That's correct.
All right. Next, we've clipped a couple of pieces from the neighborhood character ordinance and exercise. And, you know, one of the ways that while didn't get all of the answers right necessarily in explaining things, one, one thing that it really did a nice job of was with these form-based zoning diagrams. So we can contrast what I think, hopefully, we all agree that the exercise was looking to do, which was to limit or restrict and make it harder for front-facing garages, which Princeton had determined were very car-centric and were leading to some, some issues with the character of neighborhoods that were essentially, you know, warranted an entire program to investigate and, and change through zoning. So we've clipped here the section for front-area garages. On the left is the form-based neighborhood character zoning image that shows how a front-facing garage could possibly work. On the right is actually our site plan shaded in with what we would have been able to do had they not changed the pre-existing non-conforming front-facing garage. So here, to be conforming, the garage should be set back sixteen feet from the nearest part of the front facade. That's this A dimension. On the right is what we would be permitted to keep or revert to, which instead of sixteen feet is zero feet. Jeff, anything to really add to that?
No, no, you've, you've described it well.
Oddly, I'll, I may all note in subnation, but the, you know, the Princeton's rules on alterations of pre-existing structures do allow them to stay and be altered to an extent as long as they're not intensified. And Jeff, I'll ask you, when we get to the next slide, slide nine or slide ten, excuse me, do you believe that the non-conformity in the after condition is intensified in any way?
No, I don't.
Okay. So here, similar setup to the last slide. So that was the front-facing garage requirements. Here's the requirements for the preferred side-facing garage. So on the left, it's the neighborhood character drawing once again, shows a side-facing, the preferred garage arrangement, but with a smaller setback. So whereas the original condition required a sixteen-foot setback and had zero, the revised condition with the side-facing garage only requires an eight-foot setback. Again, the footprint already provided for zero, but is more conforming than the otherwise, apparently keep it as it is as of right alternative. Jeff, and again, anything else in terms of the utility of the garage that changes? You know, your understanding of what it, what it means to, to alter something? Do you believe that this increases the non-conformity or reduces it?
I, I believe it reduces it. Because of the fact that we would only be required to be eight feet on the side, supposed to sixteen in the front. And I think just visually, it looks nicer with the windows in place of the garage facing.
So moving back here to slide seven to show that side-to-side elevation. So Jeff, if it's your understanding that the neighborhood character ordinance is designed to hide garages and have them not be as car-centric, would you say the, the one on the right is more conforming and more in keeping with that zone plan than the one that would actually otherwise need to be restored on the left?
Yes, I agree with that, yes.
So unless we have any other questions for our architect, I'd like to pause now, but then otherwise I'd be summing up our case then.
Board members, any questions of the applicant, the architect, the attorney?
Thank you so much. I, I don't mean to oversimplify and we are here a bit to apologize ultimately. In going through this process and finding, making a field change that everyone thought was better and made more sense, I'll say even as a land use attorney, it was pretty subtle, the idea that the, the change would trigger a variance condition. And in our minds, we're not really intensifying a non-existing, excuse me, pre-existing, non-conforming situation. We're not making it bigger. We're not bringing it closer to the street. We're actually, while we're not sliding it back further, which would be challenging, you know, because of the existing structure being there, but by turning it sideways, we effectively move it further and take a sixteen-foot non-conformity and turn it into something visually that the code is looking for with a smaller front facade setback requirement. So instead of intensifying it, we are deep, you know, the modification or alteration that was done reduces the non-conformity and we hope you agree does it in a way that's visually more appealing, that show that that benefits the property from a better configuration from the driveway. It is less car-centric. It separates the car activities and use from the front porch and the other usable parts of, of the house. And in terms of a C two variance, remember, there's no requirement to show a hardship, though, you know, I will say moving it back won't, won't we believe benefit anyone necessarily. But this particular property, this situation is unique in that we have an remodeling, a change, an update to an existing non-conforming garage. And by making it more conforming, we think that is certainly unique to this property. This is not a request to remove the rules from, certainly from all applications or something that would have impact on, on many other properties. Again, we went through the, what we believe to be kind of reverse engineering and we all sat through, or many of us did the neighborhood character exercise and the strong preference on removing front-facing garages that are prominent and close to the front of a property from the design language of Princeton. And by making this change, while a variance is needed for the alteration, it does get us closer to that. We don't believe that there is any detriment either to the zone plan or the neighborhood. And in fact, the benefits certainly outweigh the, the lack of, of detriment. And then looking to the purpose of the plan, this is one of these unique spaces where you actually feel like we do have some insight as to what council was looking for in creating these rules. And we hope you agree that by turning the garage, it does get them closer to it without tearing down the house and building something fully conforming. And it also advances many of the purposes of zoning, which is appropriate designation of open space on the lot. That's item criteria C. G, again, space for open space and private uses. H to encourage location and design of transportation, a way that promotes traffic flow with this garage turned sideways rather than in congestion or blight and a desirable visual environment as well as preventing, again, I don't mean to associate front-facing garages with urban sprawl, but ultimately item J as well. There was a determination, I think, made by Princeton that connects these prominent front-facing garages to those negative impacts to zoning. And with item J, turning it sideways and hiding it does benefit that criteria as well. So again, thank you all for for your time tonight. Hopefully you agree that this is an improvement to the otherwise, I'll just say as of right, pre-existing, non-conforming, front-facing garage and that by, you know, having the homeowner turn it back to the way it was is of no benefit and is not better planning than the alternative of what was, was built. So again, thank you, everyone, for your time tonight.
Wow, okay. Any questions of board members of Mr. Kennedy? Or the applicant? Right, at this point, we'll open it up to the public. If anyone would like to speak on behalf of this application, please indicate that by pushing the raise your hand button. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak?
There are no hands.
Okay.
One second.
Terribly sorry. Can you hear me now?
Can hear you, but we can't see you, Mr. Saketti.
I'm afraid I'm on a mobile device. I'm not sure my camera is working. Sorry.
Well.
Let me try.
Nope, there's some movement.
We see something. Let's see.
I apologize. I'm literally in a car in Massachusetts, but I wanted to reinforce.
Whoa, 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 Mr. Saketti. Ordinarily, if we can't see the person who wants to testify, we can't let them testify. So is it possible for you to pull over or something? Because we can kind of, well, we see something. It looks very dark, though. It makes sense that you're well, I'm beginning to kind of see somebody. What about everybody else?
I, I can see a change in the darkness. I don't see any, I don't see any image.
Hold on one second. I'll see if I can turn a light on in the car.
Up there you go. All right.
Ghost, I'm a ghost in the darkness. I apologize.
That's okay. Could you please give us your address if you're comfortable doing that?
Certainly. I'm at one twenty-seven Dodds Lane. I am in the home that the new garage faces.
All righty. And you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So I, I just wanted to reinforce what Nid and Miriam had said as their neighbors were incredibly pleased that they chose to remodel the existing structure within the footprint. They made a number of just gorgeous aesthetic choices with the home, including the turning of the garage. It faces our home. That facade of the house is quite aesthetically attractive. And I think if anything, the change adds to the final footprint and view of the house in the neighborhood. And they have been incredibly communicative and cooperative with us through the entire process. Let us know what the situation was. And we're very much in support of them receiving the variance.
Thank you. Is that all?
Yes.
Okay, good. Claudia, has any, anyone else indicated they'd like to speak?
There are no more hands.
Okay. So we'll close the public portion of the hearing and Mr. Kennedy, do you want to add anything before we go in?
No, just to thank you all again for your, for your time tonight and consideration. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, board members, we're going to executive session now and comments, questions, motions? I, I would like to say that it appears that this was just a mistake on the part of the owner, not recognizing that he had to come back to the board. I think that the, I think the change is not significant. And I have personally no problem with this.
Chairman, I would say I think there's, you know, little change, obviously, the slab and the placement of the facade hasn't changed. I also in the past, you know, I voted for variances like this when we're talking about an existing structure and blending with what's there as opposed to make requiring drastic changes or eight or 16-foot. So I think consistent with some of my past votes, I would support it.
Thank you. Any other comments, board members?
I I think another really good benefit was moving over the entry of of the driveway for safety reasons. And I could see where that might, people might get momentarily confused and thinking thinking they were extending Bertrand Drive, but really ending up in their driveway.
30 miles an hour. Yes, I agree with you. Yeah, I think it's, I think it makes sense. Any other comments, board members?
It just seems to me that the end result is actually better than it would have been. And you know, to make them tear it out is just a waste.
I couldn't agree more. Okay. If there are any other comments, please make them. If not, if someone would like to make a motion. Yes.
I'll move approval of a C2 variance for this. Just like to condition it that they do readjust the new driveway so that there wouldn't be any violations, the two violations that Derek had cited. So the condition would be they would, you know, eliminate the variance.
Okay. Do we have a second of the motion?
I'll second it.
Karen, do you understand Michael's?
I do. I understand.
Okay, Claudia, can you call the role, please?
Coulson? Yes. Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Stein? Mr. Dobkin?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you so much.
Hey, good. All right, moving right along. Our next case is case number Z25-607 28 to 30 Humbert Street, block 2501, lot 6 6 lot, what am I telling you, 61 in the R4B zone. Karen, are the notices in order?
Yes, they are. The board has jurisdiction to make.
Okay, Mr. Bridger, can you summarize your memo for us?
Eric, you're muted.
Thank you, sorry. 28-30 Elbrooks Homes is the owner of 2830 Humbert Street. They're seeking C1 and C2 variances to permit the constructions of two driveways providing access to a proposed two-family house with two detached garages when only one driveway is permitted. Subject property is located in the R4B zone of the former Princeton borough. Subject lot is complying with respect to the applicable bulk regulations. The existing house has been demolished. Plans have been approved for a new house. The applicant is proposing to construct a new complying two-family dwelling with two detached garages. Section 17A403I1N, it's part of our neighborhood character ordinance, permits only one driveway opening per lot providing access to the street. The applicant is proposing two driveways, one on each side of the two-family, leading to two detached one-car garages located at the rear of the lot behind the dwellings. Variance relief is required as only one driveway is permitted and they're requesting two. They've requested consideration under C1 and C2. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions of Mr. Bridger? Okay, Mr. Kennedy, will you be representing this?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we could, we've got one other witness. Larry Murphy is our engineer, is in the attendee list. If we can move him over, he'll be our primary witness here this evening. And so as as Mr. Bridger said, this is, and if you've driven by recently, you probably saw the construction's already already happening, where there is a fully conforming two-family duplex being built on this lot. Well, it is a conforming lot, one of the few, maybe the only conforming lots on on this part of Humbert Street. And it kind of unique in that respect, the the general pattern on Humbert, one from doing several applications and and working with the applicant here. Parking is at a premium and you will see up and down the street examples of lots of un-conforming situations or situations that are conforming, but perhaps are not the best use of of land or from a C2 variance perspective, maybe not be the best planning. So we're here tonight to talk about conforming duplex and adding a second driveway so that each of the unit owners, or really renters more likely, would have access to their own driveways. We'll talk about the advantage of this, particularly in a neighborhood with with parking being a premium. I'll note that the side of the street that this project is on is not the side of the street where parking is permitted. So there would not be any loss of on-street parking. And we'll talk through a bunch of different things that we looked at. There is, you know, and was approved by zoning, a to be built, a fully conforming plan. But we'll we'll talk through and and show you the many, we feel, detriments to that and that the advantages of granting this variance to allow the second curb cut on the lot. And I'll I'll note that a neighbor could character, you know, we we got to focus on on that set of ordinances quite a bit tonight with the side-facing garages and the introduction, we believe in 2017, of the one lot, one curb cut requirement, really followed a an investigation of single-family homes. And while it does apply to residential uses in the zones that it applies to, including two families, if you recall from that exercise, a lot of the discussion went to single-family homes and the impact of removing small modest homes and building single-family homes. And and there are contrasting parking and and driveway provisions, again, particularly when it comes to U-shaped drivers. There is a provision that for certain single-family homes, a with very wide lots, a second curb cut is allowed, but in that I'll just say historic context of, let's say, the library and hodge, it's not limited to those areas, but those to to recognize that there are parts of Princeton that have two curb huts. Now, what we're talking about here, though, is two livable units in a duplex. And as we go down, up and down Humbert, you'll see several kind of interesting examples of this. Some of them are not conforming, but but ultimately that we think will show, one, that the proposed design is better, that the proposed design fits in the neighborhood without any detriment and and only positives. And actually matches what could be not as of right, but the predominant pattern on the street that you'll see is what I'll call a fee simple single-family attached duplex. So many duplexes in this part of town are on lots that are much smaller, that were subdivided kind of down the middle of the house. And in many cases, both of those units have driveways. Now, as a single-family home on one lot, you would be permitted one. Now, here, the applicant's not seeking to subdivide the lot, but in from a planning perspective, there's not really any difference that we can point to or think about that would show that one is one situation really is different or or worse than the other, one would warrant two and the other one, particularly when the planning exercise with the appropriate character was really focused on on those single-family homes. So with that, I'd like to introduce our engineer, Larry Murphy. I believe he's testified here before, but I'll perhaps ask for a slightly more of his credentials than than Mr. Fleischer, who's here every, perhaps every every few minutes. But Larry, if you could give the board a benefit of your background professionally and and work on this project.
Mr. Murphy, before you start, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
My name's Lawrence Murphy. I'm with Greenside Engineering Consulting. I graduated Rutgers University with a bachelor's degree in science. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current. I've been practicing civil engineering for 29 years and focusing on land development applications for 27. I've been qualified as an expert before the Princeton Planning Board and Zoning Board historically. And I've owned in town since 2003.
We will accept you as an expert in your field.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. If we could, again, I believe I'll have 11 slides, but if I, it's all right to share my screen and mark our exhibit as a thank you so much. Yep. Larry, as we we normally do, let's kind of zoom in and 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 show the remind the board, you know, where are the properties talking about here? So this is a slide two is the zoning map. Can you just briefly describe what we're looking at and where this property is?
So we're on Humbert Street, which is off of Higgins Street. It's a one-way drive going northbound away from Higgins, then connecting to Greenview Avenue. It's located in the R4B zone. As you mentioned before, there's no parking on the west side of Humbert. There is parking on the right side of Humbert. And it's in very close proximity to downtown. And everyone's familiar, you know, when there's events, parking spreads out and, you know, people visiting the city find whatever parking they can everywhere down Witherspoon Street into the tree-lined streets. So it's parking is always an issue in town.
Right. Next here, slide three, we've got a kind of satellite view of of the property. Maybe just talk a little bit about the the prevailing pattern, you know, in the in the in the neighborhood.
Sure, the the this property in question, the for the application is highlighted in in blue. You have Humbert Street, which is the one-way. You have single-family homes with zero lot lines, some duplexes, and you have on Greenview Avenue townhouses with garages under. And then you have Jefferson to the right. You have some parking that's accessed to the back of houses on Humbert Street from Jefferson. I think two drive, two or three houses from Jefferson, sorry, two or three houses on Humbert from Jefferson get driveway access to the rear of their lot, which is unusual. And then you also have some Humbert Lane and also Humbert Place, which provide parking to the back of certain homes. There's not a, you know, surplus of parking on Humbert Street. There's houses that don't have driveways. There's houses that have very limited parking, off-street parking. So Humbert on-street parking is extremely valuable.
And and I guess the lot is is perhaps a little bit unique in that it actually conforms. Many of the lots in the in the neighborhood are smaller than than the 60-foot required or the 6,000 square feet.
It conforms and it actually allows a two-family, you know, conform a conforming two-family. It's actually oversized even for a two-family. It's the lot itself is 9,437, so it's just shy of allowing three units on site. So it's oversized for a a two-family dwelling.
Then I guess as we zoom in here a bit, you can see kind of some duplexes around it. Interestingly, this property to the left actually has the the configuration that we're proposing, right? That's a duplex with
Yep, 18 Humbert has two driveways, one driveway driveway on the left side, one on the right. It's actually condoized. It's it's pretty much exactly the same application that we're presenting tonight.
And some other, perhaps possibly conforming, but other ways of addressing parking. You've got properties where, you know, essentially the entirety of the backyard has become a parking lot. You know, see that on the street that we backed to as well as some neighboring properties here?
Yes, that's a, it's, you know, prevalent, unfortunately, in in town. Parking is off-street parking is so such a, at such a premium.
All right, so here on slide five, this is the proposed configuration. We'll just again, take the the board through what what from a site perspective we're looking to do.
Sure. So the site's currently under construction for the two-family building, same footprint, same location that you see here. And also the two garages in the back are also under construction, same location, same size, same footprint. What we're proposing is two nine-foot, eight to nine-foot wide driveways on the left side and on the right side, leading back to the garage, providing five off-street parking spaces, including inside the garage behind the front, front facade of the building. So that would provide 10, total of 10 off-street parking spaces in this proposal. And if you if you look at this proposal, you see a substantial amount of green space behind the covered porch in the rear and also between the two garages to give access to the residents substantial green space and also the ability ability to create privacy on site by fencing in a portion of their yard if they if they choose to. So this is a, it has not, it's a, has a nice backyard, usable backyard and clean movements, pulling in and backing out, straight line.
And you know, you 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 mentioned five spaces. That's not really what's needed for homes of these sizes, but ultimately with they could accommodate guests, deliveries without taking up street spaces?
Correct. So one and a half parking spaces are required per unit and that's provided. So we do comply, but there's an extra three spaces on site for guests, for people visiting for the holidays and not, you know, that they'd be able to provide three off-street parking spaces for visitors without actually using parking on street, which is two-hour parking on the right side.
And so another view of the
The porch we were, I was just mentioning before, you know, access to the, you know, backyard, green space. It's a nice connection.
So on the right here, we've got the the bulk crunchers. Take us through all the, just confirm that we comply with all of the, aside from the second driveway, all of the requirements of the
The application completely conforms with all bulk requirements, the lot area, the lot width, the depth. It was designed and approved and is under construction. And the only the only change is really the asphalt or driveway location. And in both the conditions or both proposals, it is a compliant impervious coverage. So in the two driveway, we're under the maximum allowable impervious coverage. We're not asking for a variance for impervious coverage.
Where?
Now.
Are the cars all in the driveways?
Are the cars in the driveway?
I mean, are that I mean, are that is that where you your your total number of cars on site is how many?
Uh, under the driveway would be a la- uh, the driveway could accommodate up to five parking spaces, five vehicles. And also one within the garage. So four outside and then one in the garage.
And. So basically you have a one-car garage on each site and a driveway leading to it.
Yes, correct.
And everything else is stacked parking.
Yes, it is.
And and. This is just, these are just two duplexes.
Correct.
And and so. As you said, one and a half cars are required for each one.
Correct.
So. So if you get that many cars in there, it's going to create congestion everywhere.
I I'm I'm more talking about the capacity of the driveway.
Yeah, I understand that, but I mean, you don't anticipate ten cars on this site.
No, absolutely not. It's it's more that when there are guests or deliveries, they'd be able to be onsite rather than taking up street spaces.
Okay. It's okay. Thank you.
Um, and so um Larry, Lawrence, if you could, then this next slide. Talks through what the the compliant design wo- would could be. Um, and we can start talking about why. Our concerns with the compliant design and why we're here asking for a C-two variance for what we think is a a better design. So um, if you could. Start taking the the board through what. You know, one driveway um at situation here would would look like.
So you have one driveway on the southern side uh coming in and then it splits in a in a Y. The driveway on the left side, southern side connects to a garage and you have a space. Just outside the garage and a space in the. It within the garage. So you have two cars able to park for the left unit. And then you branch off to the right or the unit on the right and you can get three cars. Um, in that driveway in the garage. And you can see the driveway interrupts the green space and the connection to the rear porch. Also, you have circuitous movement trying to back uh turnaround or back out on a on a curve. And also the potential for one, one unit. Uh, one tenant blocking or one owner blocking the other unit, some potential conflict conflict. So we.
To Larry, I I I move to the next slide that shows the proposed on the right with the, you know, the. The backyard not being cut off and and the the alter, you know, the compliant alternative um to the left. We talk a little bit about um. One, I guess the the idea of stacked parking, you know, so uh as the chairman mentioned. You know, and when we're talking about, well, guests coming for one particular unit, yes, they would be stacked. Um, that is fairly common in in Princeton. Um, but what what cannot occur, though, if there are multiple units, those spaces cannot be stacked. They have to be, if you have two. Independent uh units like you do with the duplex, each unit has to have access to their spaces without. The necessarily jockeying uh with their neighbors. Is that correct?
That's correct, and that's why I was highlighting the the amount of capacity with the two separate driveways versus. The driveway, one driveway where it splits towards the rear of the building.
So in the compliance situation, if there were to say be the three spaces or, you know, one and a half per unit that are required here. But a guest for like, say, the left side came, they would essentially block everyone in and and not. Um, have have a usable situation. Is that compliant, but not particularly usable? Is that right?
Correct, not not desirable.
Um, a couple of other um uh notes. Um. One, we 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 explored looking at a possible shared driveway uh with the neighboring property. Want to just talk a little bit about the. Why that ultimately couldn't work?
You would, you know, effectively have three parties using one shared driveway, and I think that would exacerbate it. And we would still be here for a variance because I believe the ordinance. Indicates once you have a shared driveway, you only can have one curb cut for both properties.
I see. So when we we explored the left driveway instead of being a new curb cut sharing with the neighbor, that would actually require both. Lots to have a variance for uh an additional curb cut on top of the shared driveway?
Correct.
And is it also the case that the driveway next door um is not particularly deep, so that would would uh. Also not um, would we interfere with them actually parking? Is that correct?
Correct.
Alright, uh, talk a little bit about the turning movements, um, you know, in the back and and I guess the. Um, I know we we. Initially talked about it in terms of the usable open space, which isn't really a requirement, but you know, desirable, but maybe the the conflicts between the. Driving across that the house and and why you'd have to put the driveway here versus somewhere else.
So from from an engineering perspective, my preference is, you know, the. The two drive driveways on the right because you have easier maneuvering, the the. Driveway layout on the left brings brings the vehicular traffic across uh pedestrian, you know. Connects it with pedestrian traffic coming out of the stairs. Uh, limits the backyard and interrupts the backyard. If you're if you're playing with a ball, your kid's running around. It it also provides more attention to backing out as you're. Uh, especially the unit on the right, you're backing out and trying to avoid the stairs and then making. Uh, a turn to then come down the the driveway. It it's a more challenging vehicular movement for a resident to to make than the 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 option on the right.
And uh, did we also look at clustering the garages on the the left side as well? Uh, but that ultimately um with having without blocking, uh, there was not uh sufficient room to for essentially. Access to both garages without having a stacked car blocking the driveway?
So we we did look at clustering the two garages, having the the driveway on the left and also rotating the. The garages to be a side entry and it it just consumes so much. Um, rear yard and there was so much asphalt concentrated. We 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 thought it was a less desirable, less attractive. Than what eventually became the application which is proposed on the right.
Um, also say, it seems that, you know, in the two designs, this sideyard area kind of gets, which um. I believe is directly adjacent in between, you know, a a very public area with another home right next door. Uh, is this a particularly useful spot for an open space for a homeowner to use?
Not, you know, the the more discontiguous, you know, open spaces, the less useful it is. Um, so the the right side of the that open space on the right side is going to be less useful. Than if it were placed behind the building where it would be contiguous with the remaining open space.
So we we talked earlier, we started taking through some of the other examples, some of which are compliant, many are not. Of of other parking arrangements uh in the neighborhood. You know, some of which are a little bit unfortunate, like the the compliant alternative. So perhaps starting uh this, this is the property that we're talking about. Here with the red um. Dot, but maybe going from there to the left, going to talk through some of the other parking. Situations in town that that and and you know, why both we perhaps fit the pattern, but also. Um, show a better alternative of some of the compliant um. Options.
Sure, so eighteen Humbert is is a duplex. Uh, it's been condoized. There's, it's one lot. There's a driveway on the left side and the right side, so there's actually two curb cuts for that one lot. Which if constructed today, you know, would require a variance. So it's very similar to the application that's being proposed right now. And then you have.
And Larry, by the way, before we leave that one, this is the driveway that we kind of investigated sharing with and that. Uh, because of the the length of it and and other factors, it really would not work as a shared driveway without additional variances.
Correct.
Apologies, I didn't mean to interrupt.
And this is a, I believe this is a single-family and there's parking uh. Or in the rear.
And and would you describe that this this one as well as the one that it backs to on. On Greenview essentially have almost the entirety of their backyard.
Paid.
To accommodate the parking.
For maneuvering, for vehicular parking. Generally, generally, I would consider that less desirable.
Mr. Murphy, do you know the address of the property you're referencing now?
Thirty-two to thirty-four Humbert.
Thank you.
And then uh, next door, I believe it's twelve Humbert, which has a parking in the front yard.
And then I guess going to the corner.
Which is um thirty-six uh. Thirty-six Wiggins. It has two units and it's parking in the front yard.
Uh, so that's this this red area here where you see the car, that's actually the front yard parking on on the Humbert side of that two unit.
It's two-car wide and both cars back out directly on Humbert. And twelve is similar two-car wide. And backs out directly onto Humbert.
Thank you, Larry. Um. Before we fully get to thank you, it's a good slide to have up. If you could just take us through. You know, i- in your mind, the the positives and any negatives to the to the configuration uh that we're proposing.
So the. What we're proposing uh advances several uh sections of the MLUL, which includes purpose A. C, E, G, H, I, and J, and I I think it summarizes it. Um, by providing more on-street, by providing more off-street parking. We're reducing the on-street parking demand on Humbert Street, which is um always. You know, off-street park, on-street parking is always challenging in town, so we're. Creating a benefit by reducing that demand by providing off-street parking spaces in excess of what. A comply, the compliant alternative is and would be and is currently under construction. And there is no removal or, you know, impact to on-street parking by allowing the addition of the second driveway. Because there's no parking allowed on that side of the street. So there's no detriment to the on-street parking. Or by granting the variance because we're not impacting or eliminating on-street parking. We're actually creating excess parking as a result of this um application.
Um, another question for you. Um, this is not obviously a proposal to to subdivide and and I believe variances would be required as well, but if. If the proposed duplex were to be uh proposed as a subdivision onto two lots, as many of them in the neighborhood are. Um, would that then require this particular variance? Would that would that allow each lot to have a? A driveway?
It would requi- it would allow each lot to have a driveway, but you would actually require more variances to obtain the subdivision. You'd require a lot width. You'd require a lot width for it. So it wouldn't be a variance-free if the subdivision was granted.
And if when you're comparing the um. The benefits here, uh, which include the better maneuverability, the additional relief and off-street parking. Uh, and the um safety and open space use for the. The residents here, do you see any um? Negative um uh in in balancing that against any possible detriment? Do you see any any negative there?
I I I don't see any uh negative or substantial detriment. I actually think there's there's a benefit in. Um, proposing the second driveway.
And um, when we investigated the kind of the purposes, not just the purposes of 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 zoning that you listed that that are advanced by. The proposal, but the actual pro- um investigation the town did uh in neighborhood character. Did you see anything there? Uh, in our investigation that showed that this situation, that a two-unit duplex was a problem that was. Looking to be solved by that one lot, one driveway uh rule that was uh implemented.
I I I don't think it was discussed or reviewed in in depth. I don't think it's a, you know, it comes up very often.
Uh, before I, so I certainly want to. Offer um our our expert and engineer for any questions the board uh might have.
I have a question. Um. Well, two, actually. Um. Um, I don't have a problem with the two driveways as a matter of principle. I mean, we have a duplex there. I agree trying to. Do the circulation in the back to, you only use one driveway. It's going to create more problems. Why did you put the garages all the way at the back and require the residents to back out? A hundred feet on a nine-foot driveway that's not straight all the way back to the street?
So the 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 client I'm working with had a preference to the location of the the garages. It it also pr-. The location provides um maneuverability for backing out. To actually make the K-turn. That's shown on the on the left side for that upper right or northwest garage corner.
So I think the chairman's asking about the 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 proposed plan, I guess why.
You're not proposing a turnaround. I, it's it's a moot point. You're just proposing two straight driveways, garages in the back, no turnaround.
Correct.
You're basically, you go, you got a requirement of one and a half cars. They're going to be in the driveway somewhere. Requiring you to back out a hundred feet to the street.
Correct, there's no, there there's no envision of, I'm gonna, we need eight parking spaces or five parking spaces, therefore we're pushing it back as far as we did.
Well, and if if it helps, um, just maybe this photo might might also help you, Mr. Chairman. Um, behind the the, there's a lot of parking and uses behind the site that. Placing the garage in the corner shields the backyard a little bit from um by by placing them kind of uh in the back. Uh, versus closer up was was also a factor.
That's fine. I mean, it's it's, that's fine.
It's a challenge.
You answered my question. Thank you.
Um, I I'd like to make a comment. I had the same issue that our chairman had about backing out. A hundred feet. Um, but I took a look at the photograph of the adjacent house. And you noticed that the car there is facing forward, in other words, and it's not not all the way back. And my guess is. That people living there with one or two cars would probably be more towards the front of the property. Now, when there's a party and they have a lot of things, that's different, but as a as a general rule. I think people might just prefer to back into the driveway, not a hundred feet, but maybe thirty, forty feet.
Yeah, I would agree.
I I agree with you, George. I mean, putting the garages in the back, I think creates an awkward situation and encourages people. To park closer to the street, and you're right, it's a lot easier to just back in and try to back out.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's, that's in a sense irrelevant to the.
Agreed.
And, you know, the request for the two driveways. Okay, um, you know.
Alright, um, so.
Good comment, George.
So, thank you. Uh, uh, unless there are other um comments or questions for our. Uh, engineer, that's our 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 testimony again. Um, very much appreciative of your time. Um, we are. Uh, looking at this from a C-two perspective. We think there's many benefits to to zoning, um, both the the. Purposes of zoning that we heard, um, the, we think does not conflict with the the. Um, desire and purposes of the neighborhood character exercise that created um the one lot. Um, uh, one uh driveway or one curb cut situation. Um, and that uh, looking at the compliant plan uh cuts off. And and essentially wastes a lot of the otherwise usable backyard area um and creates some. Uh, uh, conflicts essentially uh in in movement. So. Apo- apology, I see Mr. Floyd's hand up. I I I didn't mean to um to speak over.
No, that's um. Um, the question I have, and actually it's for either. Um, or for both Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Bridger. Um, because I could be wrong. My recollection with neighborhood standard code. Yeah, clearly it says one driveway. I understand that, but also included in neighborhood code. I thought. It also stressed. Garages in the rear of the site.
Yeah.
That was a major part of it. And am I remembering correctly?
Uh, I I I want to speak for Mr. Bridger. Uh, I, I, I want to speak for Mr. Bridger, but I, I, I agree with you that, that the, and there was a bit of a contrast. You know, there's a kind of push and pull between pulling them back and being less visible, less car-centric, frankly. Um, and in almost limiting the amount of development that could occur. You know, that if you, as you pull them back, it is more coverage, which means you can do less on the property. And part of that I, I was purposeful, um, in wanting to have them back there. So I, uh, I'm curious Mr. Bridger's take, but that was my, my recollection as well, uh, Mr. Floyd.
The code, uh, basically gives you certain incentives to put the garages behind the house. You get a break in the FAR, um, there's less setbacks for the rear yard setback and the side yard setback. So there was definitely seemed to be the intention of the, the planners at the time.
But not, not necessarily all the way in the back of the property, just behind the house.
Um, oh, you get the FAR benefit if you're behind the house completely. So.
You don't have to be all the way at the rear of the property.
Yeah. Completely behind the house. So.
Yes, okay. You don't have to, but I, I think I also remember some of the exhibits for that code. Showed it purely for a bond house, but I could be wrong.
No, I think you're right.
Yeah, I think I am too.
I'll chime in, I believe is right as well. Um, so I, I, again, um, thank you all for your time. Again, in, in balancing this under the C2, uh, it's not about a hardship. It's about what, uh, best advances, uh, the, the goals of, 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 um, essentially the zoning code. In this case, we have a little bit more insight because it happened so recently about what the, what the goals really were and how this design does advance it. Um, and then in particular, for a tight neighborhood with a lot of undersized lots and a lot of units, this is a conforming, um, development. Uh, more could have been built here essentially. Uh, but here we're providing the parking in a way that's not going to have guests on the street. Uh, does not interfere with the part of the, the side of the street that allows parking. So we're not losing any street parking, but we're gaining, uh, getting cars off the street. And, um, by designing it this way with the second driveway, you do get something that matches what you see in the neighborhood. And, uh, without the expense of a, a usable backyard for these residents. And their, their applicant is, you know, frankly prefers or excited to, to offer that in a neighborhood that doesn't always have that, that almost more often has a, I'll say a slightly more complying, as if you can believe it, large paved backyard, um, which we're, we're looking to avoid. So again, thank you so much, um, for your time tonight. And again, if there's any other questions, happy to, to answer them.
Thank you. Board members, any questions of the witnesses to so far? Okay. Mr. Kennedy, what's next?
Uh, uh, that is it, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, so happy to, to, again, if there are any other questions, uh, but happy to, to yield our time, uh, back to, to the public and, and the board.
Okay. Before we go into executive, uh, to the public portion, do you have anything you want to say?
Um, again, just, uh, just thank you. And I, I hopefully, uh, you'll agree that this is an overall better plan that fits the, uh, the C2 flexible variance criteria.
Okay, thank you. If there's anybody, we're going to open this up to public comments. If there's anyone in the audience who's in the audience who'd like to speak on behalf of this application, uh, please press the, the raise your hand button and we'll call on you. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak?
I don't see any hands.
Claudia? Hold on. Who is the individual? I see somebody who's on the screen here, Mr. Kate Matts and Ms. Heinz.
Mr. Nielsen has his hands up. And Ms. Heinz.
Okay, so Claudia, would you like to call on one of these people?
Ms. Heinz is, uh.
Hi, can you hear me?
They can hear you, but they can't see you.
Okay, how do I make it so that you can?
Well, let's see, do you see anything on your screen where you can just hit start video or?
No, I don't. Let's see.
There are camera buttons.
Uh, I, I don't see it. Well, I'm always, I'm in favor of the, of the proposal with the two dri- uh, two driveways. I live directly behind this on Greenview Avenue. I'm, I'm the nearest neighbor at the, at the back and I'm in favor of it. Uh, so that's all I would have to say. I don't see any camera thing.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Claudia, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? A lot of people are popping up here.
Yep.
Okay, for the benefit of people, we see names appearing on the screen. Now, if you want to speak, please press the button that you see at the bottom of your screen that says raise your hand.
And you need to allow me to promote you to a panelist.
Okay. Okay, well, we're, we're staring at people's names here. We'll try again. If somebody wants to speak, please press the button that says raise your hand. Claudia, do you see anybody raising their hand?
No, I don't.
Okay. Well.
All right. Well, we'll give it a few seconds more here.
Maybe some people know how to unmute, but they don't know how to, maybe, maybe they don't see the raise your hand button.
It's a small hand symbol. To the left of center at the bottom. No responses, Claudia?
No, no, no hands.
Okay, all right. Well, we tried. Um, so we'll, uh, we'll end the public portion of the hearing and, uh, again, Mr. Kennedy, if you'd like to sum up and then we'll go into executive session.
Again, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, we're two, two months in a row, perhaps where you're getting out of here a little, uh, earlier than, uh, than average. So I appreciate your time, um, and I'm glad we could all be a little bit brief this evening. Uh, so with that in mind, I'm not going to say much more. Again, thank you for considering this. I, I hope you agree that the benefits of this far outweigh any detriment. And we haven't heard any detriment from this. Uh, it advances the, the, um, elements of both, we think, uh, the neighborhood character design itself, as well as the, the purpose, several purposes, uh, of zoning in a way that, uh, is just a better design, uh, gets more cars off the street. Um, and, uh, creates a usable green space, uh, that unfortunately a lot of properties in this neighborhood lack because of the, um, likely more compliant, large backyard parking lot configuration that so many properties are kind of forced to have. So with that, again, thank you, um, and, uh, really appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, board members, let's go into executive session. Comments, questions, discussion? Michael, I make it?
Um, yeah, I could speak. I find the, um, well, let's see. A part of me wishes it was for sale housing, um, that they were going to condominiumize it and there would be less rental. But you have the right to do what you want, uh, on that. Fine. I, I, I like the design. I, I, I understand the neighborhood standard on one driveway. But I think, um, it's, this is kind of the reverse of, it's not a narrow, undersized, whatever lot, it's actually a lot that is very good size and comes close to, um, it doesn't quite get there, but close to being enough for two single-family homes. Um, but it's, it's not quite big enough. So I, I think it's meeting, uh, it's below impervious coverage. It's providing all the setbacks. It's providing, you know, off-site, off, off-site, um, or I should say off-street parking. I, I think it, I pretty much agree with, um, Mr. Murphy on some of the, um, uh, master plan sightings he, he did. So, um, you know, it's, it's, it's not over maximum height. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that are under or, so I'm, I, I support the, 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 the variance for this. It provides the open space air. So. I'm a convert.
Board member, any other comments? Well, I agree with, with Michael. I think this is a, uh, a good solution. I, the idea of having a, uh, a duplex with one driveway, I think, takes away from the overall function of the property in this particular case. Again, my, my only concern, and it's not my decision because it all works within the existing zoning. I think the garage should be a little closer to the street to minimize the, um, the backing out, or at least maybe put a little turnaround, just a spot to back into. So you don't have to back all the way out to the street. But notwithstanding that, I think that the issue at hand of the two driveways, I think they work. And I think it's a good solution. I agree with Michael that it provides enough space to get cars off the street, which is important on Humbert. So I would support the application. Board members, any other comments or if there are none, if someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion if, just no other comments.
Motion, motion to approve by some.
Motion to approve.
C2?
C2, C2, please.
Thank you.
For the second driveway, the variance.
I'll second Stein.
Thank you. There's no discussion, any discussion on the motion? If not, Claudia, can you call a roll?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Dobkin?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, we have, uh, no other, no other cases this evening, so we are adjourned. See you all next month.
Yeah, next month.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Take care.
See you.